Respond to the assessor at that time.
Okay.
We're gonna try and make it to where each one of you is speaking alone. Because if we get in a debate, uh, records could be kinda goofy to begin with, and I can't allow that. All right? So let's, uh, tell us about the property at fifty-one hundred Ryan Drive. It's in the Frolig Meadows edition.
Mm-hmm.
It says Oklahoma City, but isn't that Dell City?
It's very close to Dell City, but it's still Oklahoma City's of code, so.
Okay.
Um, it's very close. I found two comparables. One was on the same street, uh, a hundred sixty thousand, and one was at one seventy-two. When we did our informal hearing, they did lower it to one ninety-three, but even the comps the county's using, they only have one at two fifteen. The other two was at one eighty-five and one seventy-two. So really, my ar- all of my arguments are just based on comps.
Okay. And what's the address of those two comps you have?
One is five zero zero nine Ryan Drive. That was that, uh, one hundred sixty thousand. And then five four zero five Embers Drive, E-M-B-E-R-S.
Five zero?
Five four zero five.
Five four zero five.
And that was at one seventy-two.
And that's the, what was the address of the street?
Uh, Embers, E-M-B-E-R-S.
Okay.
And both of these, their square footage is seventeen, one is, Embers Drive is seventeen eighty-four square feet, and Ryan Drive was seventeen thirty-nine. So very comparable to ours.
What's, what's your square feet?
Uh, square feet, I guess I didn't have that written down.
Nineteen twenty-eight.
Nine, thank you.
Okay. And was all the, all this presented at the informal hearing?
It was.
Okay. All right. Uh, what else, is that all for right now?
Yeah, that's all for you now.
Okay, we'll hear from the assessor.
All right, um, so like what she said, at the time of the hearing, uh, we did lower her from two hundred thousand five hundred to a hundred ninety-three. Uh, this property is located right in the middle of Southeast Forty-fourth and Southeast Fifty-ninth and Sooner. Uh, the two comps she is talking about that she used, um, we actually used, um, in our comparables, um, they're actually Comp Two and Comp Four. Uh, and based off of the six comps that, uh, we pulled, uh, it did justify a lowering, but not anything lower than a hundred and ninety-three thousand. Uh, at the time of the hearing, the request was for a hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred, and based off of comps, uh, that was not reachable.
All right. I show a hundred and seventy-one thousand two fifty is what the taxpayer's asking.
Oh, yes, sorry, asking, yes, one seventy-one, two fifty. Last year's value was one seventy-one five hundred.
Right, okay.
Yes, that's correct.
All right, uh, now the first thing that jumps off the page to me is that the square footage of the subject property is... Yeah, well, one of them is quite a bit more, but, uh, the other are still, they're more square feet. I don't know the layout of the, this property. But what, what's your value per square foot? Or do you have that number?
I did not write that on this one.
Okay, well, I'll figure it out.
Do it real quick.
Yeah.
So do you increase over, from, uh, twenty-two to twenty-three is seven percent? I think that's too much of an increase given what the market was.
Yes.
Have the assessor at three?
One ninety-three.
No, I mean the per square foot.
Oh.
I can a hundred, go right at about a hundred bucks a square. Am I way off or what?
I have a hundred and three, and then the owner is asking, the owner's at eighty-eight point eight-two. And then the two comps, the first one on Ryan would be at ninety-two dollars, and then the one on Embers at ninety-eight.
Any other news from the assessor?
No, I think that's it.
No, nothing further.
Well, I want you to respond to the ninety-two and the ninety-eight dollars of square footage, the two that you're urging as comps. So they're, they're worth, one's ten dollars more square foot than what you're asking.
Yeah, my square footage is a little bit higher, but I was just going for last year's value.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so you want no increase over, okay, gotcha, correct.
Any other news?
No.
All right. Uh, we'll close, I'll go close the hearing on BOE number twenty-eight. And I'll open the hearing on BOE number twenty-nine, which is property at twenty-six seventeen Southeast Fiftieth Street, in Lumberman's, uh, number three edition. Uh, looks like the assessor's at eighty-eight thousand five hundred. Uh, taxpayer's asking for seventy-nine thousand even, is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay. All right, we'll hear from the taxpayer on this property.
So I have four comps that are right next to the subject property, uh, seventy-five thousand, seventy thousand, fifty thousand, and sixty-eight thousand five hundred. Um, my addresses for those are twenty-six sixteen Southeast Fifty-first Street at seventy-five thousand. Um, five one one two South Madera Terrace at fifty thousand. Twenty-five twenty-nine Southeast Forty-seventh Street at seventy thousand. And twenty-five oh eight Southeast Forty-seventh Street at sixty-eight thousand five hundred.
Is this a rental?
This is a rental.
And I meant to ask that on the other one, did you have the rental value on the other one?
Um, yes. Do you want me to tell you?
Yeah, what was it?
Are each one of them rentals, tell us what they rent?
Okay. Sixteen ninety-five.
What is it?
Sixteen ninety-five.
Sixty-nine?
Sixteen, one thousand six ninety-five.
And that's on, uh?
Fifty-one hundred Ryan.
Fifty-one hundred Ryan.
Okay, and the rental on this one?
Eight fifty.
Any more square footage on this one?
I don't have my square footage written down, sorry about that.
Sure.
This one's one thousand one hundred and forty-three square feet.
What is that?
One thousand one hundred and forty-three.
Okay.
So, um, and did I give you all the addresses? My twenty-five twenty-nine Southeast Forty-seventh Street, my square footage was eleven twenty-two. Twenty-five oh eight Southeast Forty-seventh, square footage was ten thirty-six. Five one one two South Madera is twelve fifteen. And twenty-six sixteen was eight ninety-one, which wasn't very comparable.
These aren't nine one square feet?
I don't know how they're gotten there.
All in the same neighborhood?
Yeah, they're all in the same neighborhood. I, I try not to go outside the neighborhood or any major crossroads.
Of all, of all your comps, are they currently occupied?
Um, I'm not sure, those were just sales that I found on the MLS. So I would assume they're occupied because they're all in the last year. So nothing was in, all of these were in twenty-twenty-two. So I assume if somebody bought it, they're occupied, but I'm really not quite sure.
All the, all these sales, uh, aren't going sales as far as you know?
Yes, as far as I know.
They're not share sales?
I don't believe so. Really, I just went on the MLS because I'm an agent and just got it on market. So I don't believe so, but I guess I could be wrong.
Okay, any other?
Uh, no, that's all.
All right, we'll hear from the assessor.
Okay, uh, twenty-six seventeen Southeast Fiftieth Street is, the major streets are Southeast Forty-fourth and Bryant, as you see up there. Uh, the four comps that she is mentioning, uh, three of them were actually deemed invalid sales. Uh, one was in twenty-twenty-three. One was to settle an estate, and then the other one was a distressed sale. Uh, the other, the one other comp, uh, that was valid, uh, did not use in the comp report, uh, because the total, total of adjustments that would have had to have been made, uh, were forty-one and, forty-one point eight percent, uh, which comes out to twenty-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-one dollars for an adjustment. So I did not use that as a comp. Therefore, I used, uh, six more comparable sales. Um, and they actually supported a median value of ninety-five thousand four hundred and seventy, which is actually higher than what we have them on for.
Any other?
I, when I, when you gave that one for fifty thousand, that's when I thought, okay, that might have been it. Even though, because that's not the one that was eight hundred. I'm sorry, we're still over here with him, sorry.
Are you, you got that, or he does?
Oh, no, no, that's, that's it. I don't really have anything else.
Sorry, I.
No, that's okay.
All right.
Oh, I mean, the only thing I would say about that is, yeah, probably one of those are distressed, but I would consider our property still just as distressed too because it is not renovated, and to get it up to market value, we would have to go in there and pretty much do everything to get it to that value, so.
Uh, do you have a renter in there now?
Currently, not at the moment. They got evicted.
Have you had?
Yeah, we have. That, and that's what, they were at the eight fifty, but currently there is no renter in there.
How long has it been vacant?
It's been a few months, it was probably the beginning of January, so I know this is for twenty-twenty-two, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so it wouldn't really matter for this year, but, yeah.
To January, okay. Any other?
No, that's all.
And can't really tell us about your comps, whether they've been, they need renovating?
I would assume the ones on the lower end probably need renovating. He said one of them was a distressed property, so I know for a fact that one would need renovating. But as far as the one at seventy-five thousand and seventy, not totally, um.
But he's, he's saying one of your comps was in twenty-twenty-three, which?
Yes, which I must have missed, yeah. That's, that's okay, I must have missed that it was in twenty-twenty-three.
Okay. All right, which one was it?
Um, let's see if I have it on here. I don't think it tells me on the sheets that I printed when it was sold, so I would have to answer that one.
All right, any other news you want?
No.
All right, any questions for the board?
No.
I'm gonna, uh, close the hearing on BOE number twenty-nine. I'm gonna close the hearing on BOE thirty. It's in Beverly Heights, forty-five oh four Southeast Twenty-first Street. Looks like the assessor has reached a value of a hundred and one thousand five hundred. Taxpayer's asking ninety-two thousand, is that correct?
Ninety-seven?
Uh, I have ninety-two, yeah.
Hmm, okay.
Oh, that's last year's value.
Yes.
All right, tell us what you want us to know about your property.
Okay, so.
Twenty-first Street.
We are receiving rent for seven eighty-five on this one. Um, I have comps that have not, are all in the same neighborhood, don't cross any major roads, at sixty-three thousand, seventy-two thousand five hundred, and ninety-six thousand. Um, I, the addresses are twenty-five twenty-four Mickey Road at sixty-three thousand, and those are one thousand sixty square feet. Twenty-three sixteen Doris Avenue, seventy-two thousand five hundred at nine thirteen square feet. And then forty-five twenty-one Southeast Twenty-eighth Street at ninety-six thousand at ten forty-eight square feet. Um, this is another one of our rentals that is not fully updated, so I would say that to get in there, to bring it to the market value, we would have to go in and do renovations.
Did you say what your square footage was?
No, I didn't write those down, I apologize about that.
One thousand eighty-eight.
Okay.
Okay, any other?
No, that's all for me.
All right, we'll close the hearing on.
No, we didn't hear from the assessor.
Oh.
I mean.
I guess we want to hear from the assessor.
Yeah, uh, so the property of forty, forty-five oh four Southeast Twenty-first is located between Southeast Twenty-ninth and Sunny Lane. Uh, there were three comps provided, however, two of them were invalid, uh, both were distressed sales. The one valid comp is actually, uh, Comp Five in the comp report. And even when I do use those and, uh, five other comps, uh, more than supports that value of one oh one five hundred.
Which, which was the valid, which one is?
Uh, yeah, so that's the one on forty-five twenty-one Southeast Twenty-eighth Street is the valid sale.
For ninety-six thousand?
Uh, yeah, they paid ninety-six, it's on for ninety-seven. But yes, they paid ninety-six thousand.
What, what, when did that happen?
Uh, I don't, actually, yes, I do. Uh, it sold September second of twenty-twenty-two.
Okay. Any other?
That's all I have.
Before I close the hearing on? All right, that's your response?
Uh, yeah, nothing further.
Good. All right, I'll go ahead and close the hearing now, unless the board has any questions. Uh, on BOE number thirty. Open up the hearing on BOE number thirty-one, which is the property at two twenty-four Elm in Midwest City, right next to the high school.
Literally right next to the high school.
Okay. Looks like the assessor has valued that property at a hundred and six thousand even, and it looks like taxpayer, uh, wants ninety-three thousand five hundred, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, tell us what you want us to know about this property.
So we are receiving nine hundred fifty dollars in rent. Um, I found comps at seventy-seven thousand, ninety-five thousand, and seventy-seven thousand five hundred. We haven't had no improvements or renovations, uh, to this property, and this rental actually needs quite a bit of work to even get it up to the one oh six.
Is a renter in there now?
Currently, this one is vacant as well.
Okay. How long has it been vacant?
Since the beginning of the year, so technically in twenty-twenty-two, there was a renter in it.
Got you. All right.
And that is all for me. Oh, wait, I guess let me tell you the square footage of my houses. I have seventy-three oh five Southeast Fifteenth Street at the ninety-five thousand at seven twenty-five square feet. Yeah. Four fifteen Russell Road at seventy-seven thousand at the ten thirty-two square feet. And then three two four East Steed Drive, um, seventy-seven thousand five hundred at seventy-sixty-eight square feet. And I would need the county to tell me what my square footage is.
Russell and Steed, that those addresses are, uh, ways away from this particular piece of property, isn't that correct?
Yeah, I mean, so mine's right here. I would still say they're in the same neighborhood, though, I mean, one, two, three, four.
Yeah, I think they're in the same street.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I still considered it the same neighborhood.
Okay.
Because, and, yeah, they are kinda right next to each other, but Elm's right here, and then my comps are over here.
Mm-hmm. Okay, any other?
Uh, no, that's all.
I show a purchase price in twenty twenty for fifty thousand, is that right?
Yes.
What was the square footage of that?
The square footage was eight hundred and sixty-four square feet.
What, what does any house with eight hundred square feet?
Barely, I keep thinking.
It's a picture of it.
Yes. Oh.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
All right, we'll, yeah, there's... How many bedrooms is that?
It's, oh, you're asking, two bedrooms, yeah.
Yeah.
Two bedroom and one bath.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Fair roomy, for the eight hundred square feet really are. Okay, uh, let's see, what do we got? Any other news from taxpayer for right now?
Um, no, I will say that when we came back into possession of this property, when the tenant moved out, like, all of the, and I don't know if this is considering the value, but all of the trees were overgrown, we literally had to go in there, like, do five thousand dollars worth of just tree removal because it, this property got just super let go. I mean, tenants are responsible of taking care of the property, but these weren't, they were not taken care of. And the house, it just had water damage on the inside. But like I said, I saw that in twenty-twenty-three, so obviously in twenty-twenty-two, they had been living there for a couple of years, so.
Yeah, they were referred till the end of twenty-twenty-two, okay. All right, yeah, we, we can't consider.
Okay.
Beyond January the third. Does that give us?
Save it for next year.
For the trees in the front yard or the back?
No, so they grow, so literally the high school's right, like, there's the house, the parking lot is the high school. So the fence line, all the trees were growing over, and it was hard to tell if it was on this side of the fence or our side of the fence, and so we just took care of all of it.
Well, maybe the renters would try and protect themselves.
Maybe so.
Okay, any, uh, any other?
No.
All right, we'll hear from the assessor.
All right, um, yeah, I'm, yep, two two four Elm Street. Uh, this is between, uh, south, or Southeast Fifteenth and between Air Depot and Midwest Boulevard. Um, yeah. Uh, yeah, like she said, three comps were provided, um, two were valid, and one was an invalid, and I forgot to write why it was invalid on that one. Um, so the two comps that were provided, uh, we did not use at the time of the informal hearing, uh, based off of, they're just needing a lot more adjustments to get it to be comparable. Uh, however, um, once it was to the board, I did run the comps again, uh, just to make sure, double check, and it actually still supports a higher value if we use the two comps that were valid. Um, however, uh, with the comps that we did use, it more than supports the one oh six that we have, have them at right now.
Any other?
Which two of my comps were valid?
Yeah, it's in the duckling. Um, so, it was this one, yeah, uh, four fifteen Russell and, uh, seventy-three oh five Southeast Fifteenth, those are the two valid sales. Yes, you gotta, have to turn your head a little bit.
Yeah, what's that address on fifteen? Sorry.
Uh, seventy-three oh five Southeast Fifteenth Street.
Okay. You got that piece of property on the map there, should be right.
This one right here?
Yeah.
Right here's Russell?
It's gonna be downtown.
Are you talking about the one on Fifteenth?
Yeah, on Fifteenth Street.
Seventy-three oh five? Right here.
Okay. And what was the value on that one? You say that was a valid sale?
Yes, uh, I don't remember if I wrote anything.
For ninety-five thousand?
Yeah, ninety-five.
Okay. All right, any other?
That's it.
All right, we'll hear from the taxpayer.
Um, I guess my only thought was that I, considering these are valid, I, what was the reasoning there? We couldn't use my two valid sales?
The adjustments that would have to be made to be, to make it comparable to the subject property, the adjustments to get to that, the percentages were quite a bit higher than the six, um, that I pulled originally.
Okay. That, that was all.
So it would have actually made it worse?
It actually makes the value go higher, yes, if I were to have used the two valid sales that were provided.
Okay. All right, any other?
No.
From the tax, I bet you have, yes, sir?
No, sir.
All right, we'll hear from taxpayer.
No, nothing.
Close the hearing on BOE number, and let's, do we have any questions from the board? Close the hearing on BOE number thirty-one. Open up the hearing on BOE number thirty-two, which is thirty-five twenty-nine Hartstall Drive in Dell City. All right, we'll hear from the taxpayer.
Okay, so we, we are receiving rent on this one for nine hundred dollars, um.
Even?
Yes, even. I have comps at seventy-five thousand at thirty-five twenty-nine Hillside Drive, which is on the next street over, just right around the corner. Um, the square footage is eleven thirty-eight. Uh, thirty-five seventeen Hartstall Drive, which is on the same street at a hundred and fourteen thousand.
Thirty-seven what?
Thirty-five seventeen Hartstall Drive. Uh, square footage is at one zero zero seven square feet. And then thirty-five twenty-eight Hartstall Drive, also on, it's literally right across the street, at a hundred and eleven thousand, um, square footage is nine seventy-two. Um, I, I put it back at last year's value at one oh six five hundred. Obviously, I know I provided two higher comps. I do just believe that with us not having to do any renovations on this, or... or with us having to do renovations to get it to the market value, it still should be at the one oh six five hundred.
Currently occupied.
Ha, it is, well, currently occupied now, yes. It was occupied last year, tenant moved out, tenant back in at the nine hundred. And then just with Dell City, too, they're the worst. Just, you have to do your Dell City checklist every time a tenant moves out and in, and they have a list of stuff to fix. On top of the stuff we have to fix, so, side note, I don't know if that helps.
Just the city's requirements, or is this a housing authority?
No, this is Dell City's requirements, yeah, not housing authority. They might as well be a housing authority. Dell City got, is really buckled down compared to anybody else. And that is all for me.
All right, and then I, I didn't mention this, I guess, the assessor's value is a hundred and eighteen thousand, and you're asking a hundred and six thousand five hundred?
Correct.
Okay. All right, we'll hear from the assessor.
All right, thirty-five twenty-nine Hartstall Drive is between Southeast Twenty-ninth and Forty-fourth, and in the middle of Bryant and Sunny Lane Road, uh, as you see up there. The square footage, I don't know if it was said, uh, this home is one thousand and eight square feet. The comps that were provided, two were valid and one was invalid, and we did use them in the report. Uh, they're comps three and four, and then we had a total of six comps. And they supported that value of, of one eighteen. And during the hearings as well, uh, the condition was never brought up. Uh, the only things that were provided were the comps. So if there were condition issues on any of these, it was not mentioned at the time of the informal.
Anything else?
Do you know which were your two valid comps?
Yeah, uh, thirty-five seventeen Hartstall Drive and thirty-five twenty-eight Hartstall Drive. And they're comp, uh, three and four in your packet.
Thank you.
Anything else from the assessor?
No, that's it.
All right.
Um, the only, the only thing I would have to say is, I mean, on my informal protest that I submitted, I did say there has been no renovations done, so the current state would not sell at one fifteen, one eighteen.
Well, did you say that at the informal, that you could, it wouldn't bring value, or did you say that it had not been?
We actually only went through the ones that, um, we didn't go through the ones that he didn't lower the value on. I just sent them straight to the board.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Eh.
We'll go ahead and close the hearing on BOE number thirty-two. Open up the hearing on BOE number thirty-three, which is the property of eleven twenty-one Sapporo, Southwest Fifty-eighth Street in Oklahoma City. Assessor valued this property at ninety-three thousand, and taxpayer's asking eighty-one thousand five hundred, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Tell us what you want us to know about this property.
So we were receiving rent last year for one thousand forty-two dollars. I have three comps at forty thousand, thirty-seven thousand, and seventy thousand. And I was actually looking, these were the comps that were on the county's website. Those were all the comps that I used. It was in the sales when I looked up the county record. So I was just saying that there has not, let's see, sorry, trying to get my thoughts together. Okay, there wasn't really any real reason to bring the value up to ninety-three thousand five hundred. They had one comp in twenty twenty-two, oh, sorry, they had a couple comps that were above a hundred thousand, but there are quite a few that are forty thousand, thirty-seven thousand, and seventy thousand.
Um, so would you agree you had an invalid sale in twenty-one?
Well, I use the county's comps on this one. So from this sheet, when I pull it up, it doesn't, for me, it doesn't say invalid or valid.
No, yours.
Oh, yeah, but these are what I pulled from the county. Like, all the other ones I had, I pulled from the MLS, but I just went to the county website.
You're not understanding. You bought this property in twenty twenty-one for thirty-nine five, that wasn't a valid sale, was it?
No, no, all of ours, all of our properties that we buy are cash offers, so they're under market value. But that wasn't the sale that I used for this.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, anything else?
Uh, no, nothing else.
All right, we'll hear from the assessor.
Okay, eleven twenty-one Southwest Fifty-eight is located between Western and Southwest Fifty-ninth. Um, and if you can pull up the document link real quick. Uh, the cells that she was talking about, uh, this is how it was sent. Um, so on the left there, you see the Vs and the Is. Well, I went through every single one of those and deemed invalid or invalid. So off of that, uh, I used three, I was able to use three of them. Um, and there are comps one, three, and five in your packet. And then the other two I found as well. So we have five comps here, um, that supported that value of ninety-three thousand. And just for the fun of it, I looked at just the three. And just the three valid sales from that report also supported the value as well. I mean, we could go through and, you know, all of them were invalid for different reasons. Some were multiple per, uh, purchased properties, um, some of them were distressed. And there was another one, and I forgot to write it down, but there are just several invalid sales in that report.
Anything else?
So you're, you're, once again, you wanna, I'm sorry, oh, for him.
Oh, no, no, I'm done.
Okay, all right, now, the, the taxpayer, go ahead.
So, um, this is another one where you, where you kind of want to freeze the value. Not withstanding anything, the way the market ran these last two years, how, how are you saying don't raise the value?
So we have about seventy-five rental properties. I've only gone after the ones, that one, we have not renovated. And should, I feel, still be at the same. I do know the market is usually always rising. I get it, but sometimes I do feel like the county is raising it way too high. And if I, I'm just trying to freeze it a little bit until there are comps that support, it should be forty thousand, fifty thousand higher. But I do, I just wanted to point out, too, even like, out of, I know he was looking at the comps I provided, because I just printed them off the county assessor, but out of the five comps that he used, there was still two at seventy-five thousand, seventy-eight thousand, and eighty-nine thousand, which are all lower than the ninety-three thousand I'm asking for, and there was only two that were higher, so.
No, you're asking maybe one five.
Oh, sorry, ninety-three thousand is what you have it at. Okay, yeah, I am. Then maybe disregard what I just said, but they were still in the seventy thousands. That, I guess that's why we're only allowed to do six a day.
Yeah. I, I'm used to keep camping it down to three and that.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, there's a lot to consider, and like I said, you can get.
And we take a series, yeah.
You gotta get mixed up there if you're not careful. Okay, all right, anything else?
Uh, no, that's all for me.
Property, okay. Now, we'll close the hearing on BOE number thirty-three. Believe that's the last one on the docket, it is.
Just out of curiosity, I'm, I'm forgetting the man's name. So Jamie Diamond gave this prediction for the inflation not, and, but the guy gets, the property guru says the rental market is gonna fad down. Did you see that?
I have not, but my boss, he is all about adding more rentals to his rental portfolio, so we'll see.
Well, they're saying renters are gonna get a break because the rentals are, the rental values are.
Well.
Rental rates are gonna come down.
I would say that a lot of our rent rates are very low.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, out of the seventy-five that we have.
You, you do know that these people could pay less than this for.
A mortgage.
For a mortgage.
But I guess there's always reasons that people aren't able to buy themselves.
If they get in a mortgage, the whole lot, they would regret.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, and it ordinarily Oklahoma follows by about a year, whatever is going on in the rest of the country, so. Uh, if renters are gonna get a break, it's going to be probably next year.
Yeah.
Before we do.
If that happens. All right, anything else?
Nope.
I thank you for your information. We just, we're annoyed that people come in here with the rentals and have no clue what the rent is.
Oh, yeah.
Seriously. Yeah, so if you, if you got more to come, just don't come without the rent, all right?
Oh, yeah, that was, that's a disaster.
Yeah.
We had somebody that had like a billion pieces of property, and they have no idea.
Yeah.
They're written, of course. Not very persuasive, either. You had a good presentation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
So we've got five for you tomorrow.
Yes.
Um, and then you submitted ten more to us that I believe may first and second, correct?
Yeah.
We're doing five a day?
Uh, as far as, uh, the bulk ones, yes. Ryan LLC will be the same. Because if we did three a day on Ryan LLC, uh, we'd be here till Christmas.
So we'll see you tomorrow?
Yes, we'll see you tomorrow, okay.
Okay, all right. Anything else on this particular piece of property? Go ahead and close the hearing on BOE thirty-three if I haven't already. Any questions for the board?
Sure we have.
Comments? Okay. Good presentation, we appreciate being prepared.
Thank you. I was a little nervous. I don't know.
We're mean.
Yeah, right.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Uh, that does it for this hearing. We don't have any citizens that I see other than, uh, taxpayer.
I'll second that.
All right, have a motion and a second, all wills a favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're done.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.